Thank you for coming back and continuing the conversation about the budget.
I think it's fine with that.
At this time, I see the need to make my motion, which is to do the DD version, which is one penny on the general levy, one penny on the fire levy, from four to six on meals and lodging, the 10K tourism campaign from restricted use of 157,333 of the general fund balance to make up the difference, add 190,341 to the schools, which covers that 10 points of health insurance out of the 18 percent. And that still is a school shortfall from the original request of 369,910.
So I just want to clarify that the budget resolution speaks only to the expenses. It doesn't speak anything to the revenue. It's only expenses. The tax rate resolution that you might adopt next speaks to real estate taxes and personal property taxes.
Yep.
There would obviously require additional revenue to fulfill any of these scenarios, which could come in the form of ordinance change for permit fees, ordinance change for meals, ordinance change for lodging, ordinance changes for cigarette taxes, and those would be subsequent. If the board chose not to adopt any one of those, the revenue would necessarily still have to be provided to meet the expenses, and the board would have to figure that out. And so if you can't come to terms on changing those ordinances, then it would have to come from your fund balance.
So you need that in a form?
If you were to be consistent with Mr. Whitson, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution.
Only on the budget. And if you're more successful than me, then you can go to the next.
So the budget aligned with option DD, either it is prepared and provided, or the opposite, as DD and provided before you.
What he said. Yes, that's a motion.
Oh, second.
Motion second. Now it's discussion.
Yeah, Rachel Byans, a school board member, don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to, if that's okay. And I did ask, you're the Piedmont District School Board Rep, the Hampton District Representative is not here, so nor are any of the other school board members. So we appreciate you being here. I feel like we're up here wrestling and wrestling and wrestling over, to Van's point, questions about school spending. That should not be our questions to wrestle with. We have, we don't have bigger fish to fry. I'll just say that we have other fish to fry. Because you guys are the big fish. We've got competing priorities. We've got fire and rescue. That's a serious challenge. We've got general public safety, sheriff's department. We've got refuse and recycling. List goes on. My question to you is, and your process is in parallel to ours, you get a recommended budget, and let's just take this year as an example. You were provided with the superintendent's recommended budget. What did you and your member, your colleagues on the Rappahannock County School Board take out of the superintendent's recommended budget? Does anything come to mind?
The superintendent isn't the first person to, she doesn't give us a budget first. We have board priorities, which are established in the January, February, very early in the year. A board priority at the beginning of this year was actually to try to do more than the bare minimum for our staff, because as has been pointed out, we are a county that routinely does just the bare minimum, and we try to get somewhere towards the middle salary range of our neighboring counties. And then we end up being very conservative with pay, and we end up sliding down to the bottom of that pay rate. And so knowing that we are the largest employer in the county, and knowing that the cost of living is very high in Rappahannock County, and also knowing that our teachers need to live in Rappahannock County, need to be able to afford to live in Rappahannock County, or need to choose to have a long commute, we always, we do prioritize, and we do a survey ahead of this to know that our, that our community members, we had, I think it was a really unusually high number, about six or 700 surveyed respondents who said that the priority is, and it's consistently all eight years that I've been on the school board, it's been to give teachers salary support and to give them support for health insurance costs. That's always the top. So we started off with a much rosier picture, because we were thinking that we might get that cap lifted. You know, we put a lot of, I mean, I myself personally went individually to Richmond, et cetera. So we started off with that goal. We took out, I mean, the proposal was initially a 5 percent raise for teachers, which was less than a lot of our neighboring counties were likely to be doing. We took out, we took it down to three. I did not wish to just do the bare minimum. My perspective as someone who's getting by is, I'd like to be able to, and to get by with the board. We've taken out, there are things we'll have to do in order to, we're in a position that's much tighter than we initially thought it would be at the beginning. So that's partly the answer to your question. I mean, we definitely have a guiding, it's called the Road to Remarkable, and it has many categories that we're trying to make progress in. And so we look at, we look at that five-year plan, and we try to take away at some of the priorities within that plan. And we don't just unilaterally choose that. We also have a whole giant committee of community members that are on each, that are on each part of that plan. So we're trying to do things that will reflect what our plan is. We were legally mandated to at least do a 3 percent raise. You know, I think that we got to that point. We also do prioritize the SIFT path course. The one lever that we kind of have a little bit of control over is just being the darn best school we can be and trying to increase the average daily membership in the school. So that has been an effort. And so not being like, you know, the bare minimum we can do, but to be a school that's someone who lived in a neighboring county, might choose to work in our school and also bring their children to our school, actually brings us money from the state per pupil. So that, those are the kinds, so that's the larger construct. And Dr. Grimsley is really good at answering our questions and is, you know, actually gave us a more conservative budget than I would have chosen if I didn't have all the other concerns, and she's very sensitive to that. But the 70 percent on health insurance was huge, and it's difficult for us to see the possibility of giving the teachers a 3 percent raise and then clawing back 4 percent for health insurance for them to have what they've been used to having. I mean, that could be some, that could be part of our discussion, and we'll have to have it as a group, but insurance is a big cost. But we've tried to, we've tried to not give you a raise, but take it all back. Because as we know, everybody knows inflation is happening, and it's happening for our teachers who are the largest employee in the county, so employer in the county. So that's part of our perspective.
Thanks a lot.
And that resonates with what Chairman Mills told me, is that he said that if they didn't do what you're talking about, they would be taking more for insurance, then the raise would be given.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're going to wrestle with, and maybe we'll become more, maybe we'll be more in line with the way that other places do. I mean, we look, one thing we can say now is, oh, but you get good insurance when you work for Rappahannock County. They'll have a little bit better, but we're rationing that back, and maybe that's, that's the direction that we're going to have to go, that to follow other counties with not giving us, not having that be an outstanding part of working in Rappahannock County schools. And this will be disappointing to a lot of our employees and to the board, frankly, but we do need to, we'll do the best we can, and we'll be creative around this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Was your motion second?
Yep.
Okay. I want clarity on, this is mainly for you, Mr. Curry. If we adopt this tonight, and then we have a public hearing on June 2nd, correct?
There will be seven hearings, yes.
Right. So what happens again if that fails?
That was my point.
You are adopting an expenditure budget. You will need to provide revenue to meet that.
Right, that's my question.
Yeah. Obviously, A, you're always control of the county budget, and you could change that, really at any time throughout, leading up to June 30th and after June 30th. You have full control of the county budget. Once you pass a budget for the schools, which you must do, then they move, the schools move forward with their budget and planning and contracts to that amount. Your obligation is to provide revenue to support the budget that you provide. If that comes in the form of meals and lodging tax, or cigarette tax, or increased permit fees, that's one way to do it. Another way to do it would be, and you couldn't do it with real estate or personal property, because that, you know, that's the other resolution that you would likely adopt tonight. You would have to pull it from your savings account, which means next year, you will need that amount plus whatever the inflation is on top of that amount that you were doing this year. And so that bowl just gets bigger and bigger and bigger every year if you do that. And we'll never recommend a board to do that, but boards are prone to do as you best see fit, even all of the tea leaves, that, you know, we don't have to, you know, fortunately aren't in your seat, and we appreciate your seat, and we appreciate our seat.
I was very happy when you said that.
So what Mr. Whitson's point was before was is that, you know, how can we, you know, go about, and we, you know, if you advertise meals and lodging, we did do this several years ago, and we just didn't do it. We can do that. That's okay. And then you make up for it in the general fund. But we've been doing that now, this would be the third year in a row, and it's giving a false sense of recurring revenue, when our largest driver is recurring revenue, which is the salaries and the healthcare increases. For the largest employer in the county, which no doubt supports the economic backbone of the county, because it's got so many employees. So that's just like an economic reality. So, you know, Gary and I have had this good discussion many times, where it's like, as a business owner, I'm always like, and to Mr. Whitson's point, it's like, well, why not just write a check? Like, that's what I would do with my business, is just write a check. And it's because it's recurring revenue, and then it doesn't give the taxpayers a real understanding of where and how that money is working, because they can't rely on it.
I just have to say, as the representative of the Piedmont District, which includes the village of Sperryville, I'm very sensitive to the concerns of business owners in the village and the many challenges that they are facing right now. And very early on, I said I couldn't support this. Largely, it's because of the doubling of the sewer fees, which, I'm not a business, I'm a resident, but I still feel it. It's still a lot of money. And I know nobody's getting rich in small business. I think nobody's getting rich in small businesses very well. Best case scenario, you know, you make enough to raise a family and take a vacation every year, and you put your kid through college. Elements of the American dream. But we don't, we don't have an end. You know, we have, we have family businesses, and a lot of those family businesses have been in, have been in operation for a long time, and most of them don't ask for anything. They just ask to be left alone to do their business. And for those reasons, I can't support this. And I thank everybody again for coming out tonight.
And I'll just say, as the county representative that has in his district the town of Washington, I will say to you, and Nancy Bun, who's here, is a resident of the town, and I apologize in advance for calling out the town, but if my colleagues are about to vote on increasing the meals and lodging tax rate from 4 percent to 6 percent, and you think about the mayor's reaction to what I requested on Monday, you can imagine the reaction if you were to say, how about you raise yours to six and provide the county with three. To put it in perspective, in an equal revenue sharing arrangement, if they were to raise their meals and lodging tax rate, to be fair to Carrie, and to Ally, and her mom, and all the other business owners in Sperryville, if the town matched them and said in good faith, we're going to level the playing field for all businesses, that 3 percent increase, and the town would immediately, overnight, double, double our meals and lodging tax revenue in the county, double it. It would take it from, I think, Bonnie or Gary are probably quicker than I am on my feet, in terms of math, but.
560.
Well, no, that's, that's before, before we get started. If we were to go three and three, we're talking possibly taking our meals and lodging tax revenue from 700,000 to 1.4. And if you think about that, that's almost four, one, two, three, four, almost, pennies on your real estate tax rate.
Mr. Whitson, can you just explain to me how that's not just a political gesture? So, but like, in a real scenario?
Oh, my God.
So for the public, for the public who doesn't know, the town of Little Washington does not have to share the revenue. And when we did the boundary line adjustment, we had this discussion with them, and we tried to get somewhere. So I'm genuinely curious, like, because I didn't, I wasn't there. No, I am.
I'll tell you what, do you want me to tell you?
I'm genuinely curious how you, how, why they would just give us money.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity. Three reasons, three reasons. Outline, outline in my letter, I mentioned one, but I'll go through them in order. Number one, if the Inn at Little Washington was sandwiched between the two data centers in Prince William County, and the food was still good, would people flock to it? I would argue not. It is our land use policy, it is Chris Parish's open space, and the fiscal consequences that come with our land use decisions that make this a beautiful place, that makes the Inn at Little Washington attractive to J.D. Vance, his wife, and whoever else comes out here.
Yep.
Number one. So this idea of the town and the inn, and they're doing this wonderful stuff, and it's somehow separate and apart from everything we do, including the fiscal challenges that our own land use policies create, and that we, our board manages very well? I'm sorry, but number one, they benefit from what we do. Number two, level the playing field. It is unfair, well, first of all, it's unfair for you to call this a political stunt. It's unfair to them. It's unfair to them. Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I don't know if you saw it.
I think it was more slander.
I was just, I was asking not, but go, you finish.
So, New Iberia, before and after. Their patrons are now, under the Donahue proposal, going to be saddled with a 6 percent meals and lodging tax rate, and Brian Neus, who's going to set up shop across the street this summer, his patrons will be paying two and a half. Is that fair? That's, that's.
It's not for here, you're right.
It's, it's not fair. It's not fair. And finally, number three, for reasons I won't get into here, our efforts, our concerted, concerted efforts and good planning to bolster our largely wonderful volunteer fire and rescue system with paid paramedics and Life Pack 35s, and all of the expensive equipment, Ms. Donahue talked about drug management, we are, we have offered and offered to manage drugs in a central location for the county Fire and Rescue Departments to save them money. All of those efforts cost money, and all of those efforts directly benefit the Inn at Little Washington and other businesses in the town of Washington. And I'll tell you that if I was, if I had been at dinner at the Inn at Little Washington and suffered sudden cardiac arrest, it might have been the only place in Rappahannock County where I would have survived, because ALS 1400 is right here. And it is, it is ignoring the obvious good service is, services that we provide to the county to say, we, this little town of 84 people, let me add a fourth thing, 7,373 people, five of us, we each represent roughly 1,500 people. A town of 84 people with seven council members, if you deduct seven from the 84 residents, you're down to 77, which means that every town council member is representing 11 people. And apparently, they're thinking about raising their meals and lodging tax rate even more to do what? Manage their water and sewer system. We have, I have, also didn't get a very favorable response from the mayor, by the way, I have said to them, we've got a sewer system in Sperryville. It is old. We want our county water and sewer authority to have a professional manager. And by the way, you have a sewer system, and you have a water system, and the schools have two sewer systems. And how about we work together as a county under the sewer authority to manage it all and benefit from economies of scale, volume discounts on potassium permangate, permangate, and other mineral purchases and other inputs into these sewer facilities? And the answer's always been, no, no, we've got it. We're going to manage our solars. So what they're doing is they are taxing every citizen, or every visitor, or every citizen who eats in the town of Washington. They're taking that revenue, they're putting it back into the sewer system, and they're still coming up short, and they've got debt. And we have offered to find a way to work together to save the town money, and they're telling us that they got to hold their money because of their challenges on water and sewer. So I think that there are many opportunities for us to work together with the town, and I don't think revenue sharing is such a bad idea, because as stated, whether you need someone to save your life, or you need your toilet to flush, I think that we could offer a lot, but they don't want it. They don't want it. They don't want to work with us on these fronts. It's true.
So I totally hear you, and I agree with you in the reasons that you've put forth, which are the exact same reasons, those four, that you and I talked about when we did the boundary line adjustment. And I'm not trying to be crass here, I was just, I was wondering, those are, I understand your reasons. I was just genuinely wondering how, if we couldn't get them to do it during the boundary line adjustment, because we did talk about that, and you and I talked about that, why right now, when we're struggling over our budget, why would they want to do this? When we, it's May 15th today.
I didn't, to be clear.
This is my, this is my, this was my question, and maybe I didn't phrase it correctly, was why would they, two days ago, be like, oh, well, I know what we should do. Statutorily, we can keep all that money if we raise it up to 6 percent, which they're not going to do. And hey, why don't we just give it to them to solve their political problems?
I'll tell you what happened.
That was my question.
I'll tell you what happened and what motivated me to write the letter.
Because I would have agreed, and I tried, and you and I discussed this, that if we could have gotten that to sort of do something interesting during the boundary line adjustment, we just didn't get very far with that.
Well, we got really far with the boundary line adjustment, but.
The revenue sharing.
You're right. So here's what happened. I'll just tell you what happened.
I was, that was my question.
And then I, yeah. So the time, obviously, I know this process, like, adopting a budget doesn't, you can't today go, oh, I think we should do, do this on the revenue. I'm with you. And I'm almost done. I promise, Debbie.
Yep.
And so we're sitting here, I've got people taking shots at me for having my kids in private school. They're saying, find other sorts of the revenue. And you're, you're shorting the school all this money. And as I, and as I said the other night, I ended up in the paper, yeah, I was digging in the sofa cushions looking for some change. So considering, I live four miles outside of the town, and considering I know what's going on with the tax regime in the town, it was on my mind. I took my son to work in Sperryville at Keenan Sherwood's Childhood Shop. I run into several people who might be here. And some who, some who were here. And, and we started talking, and I told them that it was likely the rate was going to go up to 6 percent. I didn't agree with it. And in that conversation, somewhat, I hate this word, I'll use it, worked at it, we started thinking about, well, out of the town. And considering I'd been sort of beat up, I came home and I thought, you know what, Whitson, it's time to write a letter and put it on the record, because to date, I have been very discreet. And I raised the question privately, quietly, respectfully. And so I thought, you know what? Heat of the moment, maybe not the best time to write a letter, but if you read the letter, I could not have been more polite. And it was only a request for consideration for the future. I had no expectation of anything happening this year. It wasn't me saying we're desperate for money and you got to show up. It was just saying, hey, you know, we're out here battling over whether or not to raise meals and lodging taxes, and this whole system that we have with this little town of 84 people and a county of 7,800, with different tax rates and businesses all competing with one another, sure doesn't add up. And I just thought, what I presented to them was a logical outline of a proposal for them to consider, and the response was, I'm not going to respond to his letter, nor will the town council consider this. So I think we're done. And I probably talked more about it than the town government ever will. So I tried, but it wasn't for this year. It was to say, hey.
Oh, it wasn't for this year.
No, it was, it was. No, it wasn't for this, it was to, it was to raise publicly, as we're all highly sensitized to questions of revenue generation, to raise publicly the idea. That's all it was.
Let's consider this.
I think there will be opportunities in the future, especially with the rejuvenation of this complex, which is obviously a primary concern for the town council. And, you know, it would be nice to work together on something, because that's so important to everyone. And, and money is part of working together.
I suggest that one of you take the lead in the town at this point. No, I'm kidding.
Well, I'm hoping that they'll all come to the visioning or get together for the comp plan on Monday evening at the Company One, the Washington Volunteer Fire Department. I asked the Summers to specifically reach out to the town council members today, because I think it would be very valuable to them.
Good for you. Any other discussion on this? All right. I'm going to go ahead with the vote. We'll call. Ms. Comer?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson? Mr. Carney?
Nay.
Aye.
And I also.
All right. We got others, we got others. Oh, you got a.
Tax. So, you know, I'm going to do a quick question. I should.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to move to approve the tax rate resolution that was posted on board docs under DD.
So just to be clear, this is for real estate tax rate and the personal property tax rate. And it sets forth special exemptions for personal properties, such as the fire rescue members' vehicles are set to a tax rate of zero, and it sets the equal license tax at $25, which is the same as it has been.
Thank you for clarification. That's my motion.
What time?
A motion and a second discussion. All right, hearing, no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Nay.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
There is one other resolution related to the, of the bonus that the state has provided partial funding for. The governor has provided a bonus in his budget. And the state code requires you to have, have an ordinance for that, which required a public hearing, which you have. So that is a bonus in the amount of 1.5% as of July 1.
I've moved to.
As well as 3,500 for the library director out of the library's investment fund.
I move to adopt the bonus ordinance presented in public hearing. Yes, was held on April 21st, 2025.
Correct.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
As I mentioned, so we'll call, please.
So, one more time. Ms. Comer? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, for a second. I can never tell between.